Good evening and welcome to the Fort Mill Town Council Regular Meeting for January the 10th, 2022. It's an important meeting tonight, as they all are. If you would, please silence your phone. Do mean silence. I don't mean put it on buzz or whatever. Silence it so that we can give you our full attention and you can give us yours. With that, we will stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Ronnie, would you do our invocation this evening? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is right. Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for the many blessings of life. We pray that you be with us tonight, give us the wisdom to conduct the town's business. We give you the praise and honor. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Council members, you have received a copy of the minutes from the December 13th regular scheduled council meeting and the minutes from the December 21st special called council meeting. Are there any changes, deletions, or amendments?
There are none. I'll move to that.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. It's unanimous, Virginia. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside the council chambers. Prior to the start of the meeting, citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Do we have anyone signed in?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Before we begin the presentations, I would be remiss, in a sad judge of character, if I did not recognize the outgoing members of this council. Trudy Hemsaw, more affectionately known to me as Trudy Bing, has served in many capacities in our community. She's been on the school board, she's served with the chamber, and she's served diligently here on the city council. Trudy is an honorable person and has taught me much in the time that we've spent together here about loyalty. There's not a single question, concern, or any slight bit of information that the public has asked of her that she didn't bring to us and didn't follow through with her duties as a councilwoman to ensure that she got an adequate answer and got that back to the public. Guys, that's what you vote for people for. And for the 7% of people that voted in our election, I want you to know that Trudy has served as well as anybody could ever hope for her to. Her friendship is priceless to me. I will continue to look for Trudy at our events and in our council meetings. She came to council meetings before she ever ran for council. She has been civically involved on so many fronts that I, for one, as a citizen of Fort Mill, want to thank you, Trudy, for the blessing of your service. Thank you. Thank you so much. We love you, always will. Jamie's not here this evening. Jamie served the town honorably as well. I will tell you that of all the people, he is a tenacious young man. He is. He's been through personal circumstances. He fell and broke his back. He still came to the meetings. He had heart surgery. He still came to the meetings. He really just was detail-oriented and determined to do his very best for the town of Fort Mill and its people. So even though he's not here, I'd like to thank him for his service with this council. Last but not least, Larry Huntley. Oh, my goodness. The force of nature is Larry Huntley. If you knew Larry, you knew he had a joke on his lips, a smile in his eye, and positivity that just ran out of his veins. Larry put his whole heart and soul into serving the town of Fort Mill. He did. We didn't always agree on everything, but that was part of the fun of it, you know? I miss Larry. We are sending Larry some video thanks for his service to the town. We all have a great deal of admiration for Larry, for Jamie, and for Trudy. And from my heart, I thank you all for your service. So thank you so much. With that, we will move into the presentation portion of our agenda. Presentation number one, swearing-in ceremony for the appointment of Mr. Alan Garrison as council member representing Ward One for the town of Fort Mill. This appointment is for a term of four years, expiring in January 2026. Our very own Judge Kyle Hobbs will perform this for us. I'm going to turn this microphone around. Alan, if you and anyone in your family that would like to join you will come forward, we will be happy to swear you in.
Repeat after me, Mr. Garrison.
Sir.
I state your name.
I, Alan Garrison.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the state.
The Constitution of the state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As council member of the town of Fort Mill.
As council member of the town of Fort Mill.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly and impartially.
Fairly and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise the trust.
Reposed in me.
Reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavors.
And will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
The purposes.
The purposes.
For which I have been elected.
For which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Garrison.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you.
For all those that were swearing in this evening, they will take their seats once we have completed the swearing in and held a short break as we transition from today's council to tomorrow's. Thank you. All right, next, the swearing-in ceremony for the appointment of Mr. Ben Hudgens will be delayed. Ben unavoidably could not be with us this evening. He expressed his sincerest concerns that he hated he was missing it, but we understand and he's not getting out that easy. We will swear him in at the next possible time. So, presentation number three, swearing-in ceremony for the appointment of one of my younger brothers. I'm kidding. Mr. Chris Wolf, Mr. Chris Wolf, as a council member representing at large, seat one, for the town of Fort Mill. This appointment is for a term of four years, expiring in January 2026. Judge Hobbs will do the honors.
You make you carry that big old Bible.
Both the whole family.
Mr. Wolf will now swear you into office. I state your name.
I, Chris Wolf.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
Due to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the state.
The Constitution of the state.
And of the United States.
And the United States.
As council member of the town of Fort Mill.
As council member of the town of Fort Mill.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly and impartially.
Fairly and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise the trust.
Reposed in me.
Reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavors.
And will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purposes.
The purposes.
For which I have been elected.
For which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Wolf.
For those of you that would like to know, this is Ms. Mary Sue Wolf. Mary Sue is a wonderful resident of Fort Mill, long-term, and very beloved by all of us. So thank you for joining us. Presentation number four, the swearing-in ceremony for the appointment of another child, of Ms. Julia Soprano, as an Associate Municipal Judge for the town of Fort Mill. This appointment is for the term of one year, expiring in January 2023, and Judge Hobbs will do the honors.
Mayor, can I use the Bible?
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Ms. Soprano.
Would you like for your family to join you or to hold it?
Nick, you want to hold the Bible?
I'll have my fiancee join me.
Excuse us as well.
It's a good thing to do.
You'll see what he's getting into.
That's right. So, Nick, you're going to stand right here. You're going to hold the Bible. Julia, if you'll place your left hand on the Bible. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Julia Soprano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge those duties.
Discharge those duties.
And will preserve.
And will preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As Associate Municipal Judge.
As Associate Municipal Judge.
Of the town of Fort Mill.
Of the town of Fort Mill.
I pledge to uphold the integrity.
I pledge to uphold the integrity.
And independence of the judiciary.
And independence of the judiciary.
I pledge.
I pledge.
In the discharge of my duties.
In the discharge of my duties.
To treat all persons.
To treat all persons.
Who enter the courtroom.
Who enter the courtroom.
With civility.
With civility.
Fairness and respect.
Fairness and respect.
I pledge to listen courteously.
I pledge to listen courteously.
Sit impartially.
Sit impartially.
Act promptly.
Act promptly.
And rule after careful.
And rule after careful.
And considerate deliberation.
And considerate deliberation.
I pledge to seek justice.
I pledge to seek justice.
And justice alone.
And justice alone.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Ms. Soprano.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, let's, can we, yeah, that microphone thing.
Kids, I can talk loud. Can we take a short break to make the transition to the new council, please?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. Do I need a motion for that, Barry? Okay. We're just going to take a very short break. Thank you. All right, guys, let's, now we will move to presentation number five, the MLK Call to Service Day for 2022. Chris Sardelli will be doing that presentation for us this evening. Thank you, Chris. We appreciate you.
Good evening, council. Good to see all of you. Happy New Year. Chikana Hester couldn't be here tonight, so I am subbing in for her, but we just wanted to tell you a little bit about our Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Call to Service Day. This will be held on January 17th, so a week from today, from 8:00 a.m. to noon at Fort Mill Town Hall. For anyone that doesn't know, it's 200 Tom Hall Street. But in the spirit of Dr. King, who said anyone can be of service, everyone could be great because they could be of service, we wanted to host our annual event where we allow the public to donate whatever they can to a number of organizations that have critical needs. So we're spotlighting seven area organizations, and I'll just run through those very quickly for you, but they are places that we have collected for before, and we've received so many contributions. Last year alone, we actually had very many donations. I'd say dozens of boxes filled to the top. But those organizations are Adult Enrichment Center and Renew Memory Care, and they are requesting gift cards to Lowe's or Walmart for supplies for clients with dementia. Bethel Men's Shelter, who is requesting men's sweatshirts and sweatpants and used sneakers. Classroom Ready, who is requesting new and high-quality, full-size backpacks for children. Fort Mill Care Center, who's requesting several food items, including cereal and oatmeal pancake mix. The Historic Paradise Foundation is requesting Walmart gift cards to buy supplies for their after-school programs. The Palmetto Women's Center is requesting diapers and baby wipes. And then York County Council on Aging is requesting washing detergent, dishwashing liquid, jackets and scarves. So we've actually done this before, and I think we have some pictures from previous years. This is actually from 2021, and as you can see, this was just in the span of four hours last year. We're going to be doing something similar. It's a very COVID-friendly event. We're going to have boxes outside Town Hall. Town Hall will be closed. Residents, anyone in the community can just drop their supplies into the marked boxes. And you can see, we had families, we had children, we had all kinds of generations come and donate supplies. It was a really great event. And this is, we've been doing this annually. It's changed every year, but this is pretty similar to how we held it last year. So we'll have a flyer on the door and a banner outside Town Hall. On our website now, there's the downloadable flyer that people can see all the items that are up for donation, and we have been promoting this on social media as well. So hopefully we get a lot of turnout, but please pass that along. Anyone that wants to can look on our Fort Mill website, fortmillsc.gov, and in the Spotlight section on the center of the page, there's a story, and you can access all this.
Any questions, Chris?
Mayor, is this going to be advertised on the, at the walkway, at the park, on the billboard out there?
I think we've typically put it on that rolling sign. We also put it on all our social media. This is a number of years that we've gone to this type of celebratory activity for the day because it has been so successful. I remember the first year we did it. We did it up at the Sprat Building. It was incredible. We had people, vans, things to donate that came to the actual event. And I love that it's a true service event, and I really appreciate our staff and all the work and effort that goes into coordinating it and staffing it on a holiday. So, thank you. Anyone that would like to contribute, please, by all means, they've made it as simple as possible, and we'd love to have you do so. So I know that it is a holiday. Will somebody be checking the boxes for overflow and that kind of thing?
We'll have teammates there. We're going to be, I know Chikana and I will be there staffing it. We've done it every year, but we'll have teammates there as well, and we'll be collecting the items as they come in and then bringing them into Town Hall so they're secure. But we're leaving it like this to allow people to not have to worry about being in close contact with people. Then we empty them, and then we just wait for another car to pull up. So it's, we're making it hopefully as easy as possible, and people like being able to just drive up and unload their cars.
It's a great event. Thank you so much for your efforts. Any further questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris. We appreciate you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. We do not have any old business items this evening, so we'll move immediately into the new business item, number one, consideration of event policy pertaining to the rental of municipal parking lots. Davy, you're going to lead this one up for us.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Council, the town has not previously had any policy in place pertaining to renting or leasing or utilizing Fort Mill municipal parking lots for events. Haven't had a lot of requests over the years for it, but recently we've seen an uptick in the number of requests to use our municipal lots. The town of Fort Mill owns a few lots around town, but notably the two parking lots. The one across the street behind my back is leased by the town of Fort Mill. It's, it falls behind the one side of the buildings of Main Street. And then the town actually owns a good portion of the lot, parking lot across from the other side of Main Street, the Hobos Restaurant area, the Sprat Building area. So we own that lot. What we have noticed in recent, in the recent past, when we've allowed businesses or representatives in the community to utilize the parking lot, doesn't always work well for all town merchants. As you know, there's limited parking in the downtown area, especially right along Main Street. And so when you close off a portion or all of a municipal lot, it kind of puts a burden on the other merchants and the, you know, their clientele that's wanting to visit. So with that, and because of those issues, we wanted to bring this to Town Council and have you give us some guidance or vote on a policy that we'd written up, basically not allowing any of those renting of the municipal lots or use of the municipal lots unless it's for a town-sponsored event. And again, we try to not utilize the entire event for an all-day purpose when we do use it for a town event, but there will be some, sometimes, and opportunities for us to utilize a portion of one or both of the parking areas.
Yeah, to my knowledge, council, we've only allowed it to be rented once, and we did it in a trial fashion to determine what challenges we might face. And it is very difficult for the remainder of the businesses on Main to have adequate parking. I mean, we all struggle with parking anyway, so it just doesn't seem fair to everyone. The town-sponsored events are all sanctioned by us. We talk about it. We give ample notification, and we work hard to identify parking during those events that will allow everyone to have a safe place to park. So that's a bit different. So this is something that, one of the things we talked about in 2021 was to take the ideas that we have and need to put into policy form. This is exactly what this action is about. It's to put it in policy form so that our staff can entertain the requests as they come based on policy, not just on what we discussed. So this is a policy to say we will not move forward renting out the municipal lots downtown. When, can I?
The food truck that sits behind the barbecue place, is that part of their lot?
They do have that parking space, don't they? In that, there, Chris?
They do not own that parking space. That's part of the parking lot for the town of Fort Mill. So it would be, it may, this could, would affect that as well.
How often are they even doing that? I don't even know. I never hardly leave my house anymore.
I don't know the exact number they have, but it typically have them on Monday nights from what I've.
Every Monday?
At least during the summer months. I don't know that I've seen them in recent weeks, but during the spring and summer, I believe it is about every Monday.
It's kind of an overflow thing, isn't it, from the RMRRTs?
It is.
Well, I think that's something, you know, to take into account. There, I can see cyclists right now on their Monday night ride, and they need to use that parking to gather. You know, I want to be as amenable to all functions downtown as possible because our public loves it. But I do think anything that we do that causes a challenge for other businesses, isn't something that feels right to me.
I'm not disagreeing with the policy. Just asking, do we need to have a special consideration for food trucks? Or if a food truck were to be down at Veterans Park, for example, how do we separate that? Just because we know, you know, not just food trucks, coffee trucks, all of that. So, and Veterans Park would be considered town-owned parking lot. So how would we handle that? Or would you just say no unless it's a town-sponsored event and just leave it that way?
That's the way the current policy is written up now. We do not have to, if we want to tweak that policy, certainly, you can certainly do that, to take consideration of food trucks. We would just, you know, staff, like some guidance from council as would, as to what you would like to see with that policy.
Does the new policy require one or two votes?
It should just require one.
Just one. Then I would like for us to, that is an excellent question to bring about and to consider. So for me, I'd like to delay a vote. I know delay's not the best word. We'll push forward a vote on this one when we've all had an opportunity to consider, and we'll look to you for guidance on how we might word it and if we want to word it so that a food truck is allowed, since we seem to have done that a while.
Mayor, have. Father, do you?
Yeah, I have a question. Dave, who, did you check with other municipalities? Others had similar issues? I know our parking uptown is very tight, but food trucks were one that comes right off there. I'm sure there's other, you know, more, we'll say Girl Scouts, but other things like that that may be taken into consideration. So if, if staff checked with other cities to see what they've come up with? We did not check with other municipalities on this. We could certainly do that. I think as Fort Mill is unique in the amount of parking there.
I was getting ready to say that. It's kind of hard to, it's apples and oranges. I mean, when you look at Rock Hill and the width of their streets and the amount of ancillary parking that they have.
And they have a lot of food trucks.
Yeah. It's just a little bit complicated. Going back to when we started seeing a resurgence of businesses on Main, we had some issues with parking in spaces that caused safety considerations coming off of Confederate because you couldn't see up or down Main. So this is something that we've looked at for what policies on food trucks, but again, the, you know, we don't even own that lot. We lease it.
That's correct.
And then we have the other lot. So there are some peculiarities with our situation that probably warrants us deciding.
We definitely need to work on parking. That's one of the things we heard during campaigning is, you know, it is what it is.
I was so happy they were talking to you instead of us for a while.
Yeah. But anyway, that's, one other question. So are, are food trucks permitted? I mean, do they have to get a business license? Could, could, could we be a permit to use those parking lots to help raise some money so we could do, use that to raise funds for parking or other issues?
That's complicated. There's no way we could charge permits to ever pay the price per acre.
Oh, I get that.
Or the paving, you know. So I understand where you're headed, and that's a good idea, but it just won't work that way. The food trucks are supposed to have a license, and they're supposed to be checked by the fire department.
That's correct.
Because there appeared to be a historical issue with fires on food trucks, and I believe they have to have de hacked also. So we provide notification and have our policies like every other community. That doesn't mean that every truck does it.
Got you.
Okay.
So Mayor, and just, and members of council, staff will be meeting tomorrow on food truck issues because of the, the increase in food trucks in the Fort Mill area and not having the opportunity, or we're trying to find ways to make sure we're, they're following all of the town codes and ordinances. And it's been a challenge in the past because they are popular in most every neighborhood, and they pop up and disappear.
They're everywhere. They're at churches. They're at schools. They're at neighborhoods. They're downtown. They're at other restaurants. They're at breweries. It is a phenomenon that I think, you know, came upon us, and we did the best we could initially, but I do think an annual review is in order to make sure we're keeping up.
That's, that's right. And again, they're popular and, you know, I like them, but we're not trying to discourage the, the small businesses and the popularity of that, but we want to make sure that we're addressing the liability issues of our town citizens.
They're at a lot of gas stations now. They seem to be in every parking lot that there's an available space.
Right.
So.
So do we need to make a motion to defer to next time?
No, we're not. It's just a presentation. So we're not voting as of yet, but thank you for thinking of that.
As we're looking at this, Davy, on the policy for it, it would be nice if we had a visual or a list of the parking lots we know they're involved. I know you've mentioned a couple of Main Street that we own, several others. I'm sure these are the two that have the biggest issue, but again, for more visual, as we're looking at the other side of Main Street, beside Hobos, they've got two grass parking places along their fence next to the van stand. Is that town-owned or is that Hobos-owned?
Nope, it's theirs.
Okay. So if they wanted to park a food truck right there, there's nothing could stop that.
Unless the food truck wasn't licensed.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, but then, a legal food truck.
Yeah, they have their own food trucks.
Yeah. Then the other question is, we talk about this, how would the parking places along Main Street? I know at one time it's been discussed occasionally having, and this was very early on with food trucks, having a food truck on Main Street for one of those. I'm just thinking of, if we're eliminating a rear parking place for it, where else are they going to go? I'm just thinking of if we're eliminating a rear parking place for it, where else are they going to go? And thinking, I can see somebody saying, well, I'll put it right out front.
And, and that's a good point, but, and then that would be a, second line Department of Transportation issue because it would be a, in our, I think in our opinion, a traffic concern, traffic hazard, blocking visibility as well as being the width of it, so.
Can't imagine the pedestrian issues related to that. And moving forward, as we begin our planning cycle in January, we need to talk about parking on Main Street period. It remains unsafe, as is judged by the Department of Transportation, and anyone that lives here can tell you it's, it's really an unsafe condition. So we need to wrap all those things into our planning session that we will discuss downtown.
One other thing, Davey, we're talking about uptown. What about, you, you mentioned all municipal parking lots, so that would include the parks? Like Elisha Park, Hair Street Park, Steel Street Park? So do we want to exempt those or we want to include those in this ordinance?
Well, in this, we rarely get any requests to shut down park, parking lots. But I would imagine, we, I don't know of many cases where we would want to shut those down unless it's a town-sponsored event, Sacola Strawberry Festival or any of our.
Well, parking lots fall under the Parks and Rec because they're connected to parks. So there are individual events at some of the parks, there are ball tournaments at Dobie's. You know, so they'll fall under that policy. And we have talked about that.
That would make it a sponsored, okay. That's kind of where I was going, not to make something so broad that it creates other problems.
No, no.
Okay, good.
We'll be specific.
Yep. Great.
Does it have to be an all or nothing policy where it's either all parking lots or none? Or could you specify, say, one at the bottom of Main Street, that parking lot there as one that could be used or something like that? Or?
I think we have the opportunity now without, you know, before the vote.
But we need to be careful not to be judged as discriminating against one business versus another. Therein lies the reason for the policy altogether, is that we get a request, we like the people, we love what they're doing for the downtown, but it causes problems for the other merchants, so that's why.
Should there be clarity in the renting of the parks to include X number of parking places? So to your point, we probably don't get requests very often for it. But I see Steel Street Park occasionally, though. Sometimes events that they have will spread out, so whether it's.
Hair Street.
Yeah, yeah, they're renting out the shed, but probably needs to come, the rental includes two parking places or something. Maybe leave it as it is today, but as staff goes through this and we start hearing concerns from the public, we may need to have a tweak.
Yeah, and I think too, we have to be cognizant, anything we do, we have to enforce. We don't need to just arbitrarily come up with good ideas and then we can't enforce them. That is a foolish path to take. So I don't disagree with you, but I hope in what we have currently for Parks and Rec that we have discussed some of the parking situations alongside of, do we rent to a yoga master? We have had those issues come before us, and we have discussed it. So those we should refresh and take a long look at. I, I agree. Okay? All right. Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll move to new business item number two, consideration of intergovernmental agreement with York County pertaining to housing of inmates. Davey, you're on the hot seat again.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so the municipalities in York County met with York County manager several months ago. There has been an intergov, intergovernmental agreement between the county, the Sheriff's Department, jail, and housing of inmates for all the municipalities. Many municipalities in, in the county are closing their jails. Fort Mill will be one of the, we're looking at doing that in the near future. But we've been taking advantage of transporting inmates to the Moss Justice Center in York, in York County, and they've been housing them for us. So for years, we've had an inter, intergovernmental agreement to the, and it has been outdated. And it's to the extent where I've tried to look up that agreement, and I can't even find one. And the county's even agreeance that it's been so long outdated that they, they're not, I don't even know if they have the written form of it. In saying that, they've, they've tweaked that agreement, and they've reached out to municipalities to renew the agreement moving forward. And they're, they're going from $42.88 per day for, per inmate for any charge, whether it's a municipal charge or a charge for General Sessions Court. They're going to change to where they would only invoice the town for municipal charges only. So if we send someone over to the Moss Justice Center and have them housed, they would pay $73 per day if it's just a municipal charge. If there are any other charges associated with that, that would go to General Sessions, and the county does not charge municipality for that. And if we send them over there with municipal, with, with General Sessions charges, then the town is not, does not pay anything to house those inmates. But put that into perspective, the county manager made me aware that this agreement, they would like to retroactive it, make it retroactive back to July 1 of 2021.
I bet they would.
Well, if they do, and we agree to that, they previously billed us from July 1 of 2021 through November 30 of 2021, $8,833.28 to house inmates.
That's what they already billed us, or that's what they will bill us?
That's what they've already billed us.
Okay.
So if we agree to this new, the new agreement under their guidelines, that would reduce that bill to $146. So it's a, it's a significant decrease in what we would pay now.
I'd like some, I'd like to give some background in history for Council, given that I've been in numerous sessions and meetings in regards to this. There was a question that arose in 2020 or maybe even 2019 about the validity of keeping our jail open because we do take in prisoners from the Sheriff's Department. We do house for TKK temporarily, mind you. But we have looked at, you know, the liability of that for the town itself. There are some complications if we close our jail and we start transporting everyone because we have to have a extra vehicle for transport. You have to have extra officers for transport because you can't transport a female with just a male officer or vice versa. So it is a cost to the town. It is, but it is something that we've been mulling over since at least 2019. TKK, Clover, York, and particularly Rock Hill because they transport and have the largest volume, largest population, largest volume. You know, their costs far exceed ours. And somewhere along the line, there was a question of whether it was legal to charge or not because of the taxation. And there was at one point in time during those conversations, belief that it wasn't, and there wasn't any contract that said, do it. So a couple of those municipalities have not paid at all for a period of time, over a year. We have continued to pay, we have continued to have a very good relationship with the Sheriff's Office, and I want us to. But we don't need to pay for things we don't need to pay for. So it does sound great to go from $8,000 to 146, and I know they're working really hard to get this right. But I, I do think on the long term, we, we need to have our decisions made on how we're going to move forward. I believe we put money in the budget for the vehicle and extra officers, did we not?
We did.
So we've, we've been proactive to set ourselves up to handle the change. We are not in, we're not in unison with other municipalities because they're looking at it differently, okay? So right now, this is a complicated decision to make. It truly is. So the presentation is so that we get the information and we understand what is happening. I know you probably have a lot of questions, there's probably a lot of questions we can't answer, but that's the evolution. Am I missing anything, Chief?
No, ma'am, not really. I mean, going forward, we have the same situation, you know, regardless. We just have a lesser number of General Sessions-related charges. We've made a number of considerations as a result of COVID. So during the years 2020 and 2021, and we addressed that. So, but there's still, obviously, the vast majority of arrests that require custodial arrest are going to be General Sessions-related charges for which we don't, we don't get charged, as Mr. Bream said. So we should see a substantial reduction based on our officers' actions with regard to that. And then the fact that the majority of custodial arrests, things that we can't write on a summons and have that person come to court. And those are the ones that are going to require, and most of those are going to be drug-related offenses and higher-class felony crimes that do require incarceration and that also going to result in a General Sessions charge, which would not result in a charge for us financially.
Great information. You might also want to remember sometime back, there was a proposal made to build a new facility on our side of the county. And I know the county put effort into it because there were several tracts of land that they attempted to get under contract and were fought off because one reason or another. I guess nobody wants a new moss justice in their backyard, I guess, I don't know. But I'm pretty sure we paid some taxes towards that, and it ended up being an expansion instead of a relocation or an addition. So again, this is a long-discussed, lengthy, multifaceted issue that for me, I am so grateful that we do what we do with what we have. And I'm, I'm uber grateful, given the conditions you've had to work under in the last two years with COVID, and you've managed it beautifully. So I want to thank you for that. And guys, we're the luckiest municipality in the country when it comes to the service that we receive from our, our police department and our sheriff's department. We, we are beyond blessed, so we need to do whatever we can to support them and to make this as easy for them as possible.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, can, can I just a little more background? What's the overall goal? You mentioned like closing, or we're trying not keeping housing prisoners here at all? Or is this a COVID issue? Or I know we have a growth issue too. I knew there was a couple of years ago, the, the city hall moved to give the police officers more room and this, that, and the other. So a little more background would be nice.
I think what the, if, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what our 2019, 2018 discussion was that we were housing people for longer periods of time than we intended. Is that not correct? And they weren't people that we arrested.
Right.
Okay, so I think we were trying to fix a situation where we were providing more than what we planned for and than what we needed. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And over a period of time, and within the last year, then we don't, we don't continue any longer to temporarily house Sheriff's Office detainees or TKK Police Department detainees. So they're strictly folks that have been incarcerated as a result of arrests by officers from Fort Mill Police Department. So, and of course, you know, I, I know everyone understands the liability involved in, in operating the jail, even as a temporary holding facility, which is what we currently are classified as.
Correct.
The persons who cannot make bond or who have to remain incarcerated, of course, are transported to Moss Justice Center, to the Sheriff's Office Detention Center. So we're simply just a temporary holding facility. But of course, as a temporary holding facility, we're still required to maintain all the standards that we would if we were a full-time jail under Sacola Department of Corrections regulations. So the things that, that we incur from the standpoint of liability and expense to operate and the logistical issues that come from that are no less for us currently than they would be if we were a full-time detention center. And that's, that's one of the things that I know has been the predominant concern for us, as it has been, I know for you all.
Sir, our goal would be continue to be a temporary jail only and not hold over X amount of period of time? Is that kind of, I'm just trying to figure out what we're trying to solve.
No, sir, our ultimate goal is to be able to, and, and this is based on not only our, our belief, based on historical events, but also based on the municipal association's recommendation and our, our risk management folks there, is that we don't maintain a jail facility. Ideally, what we prefer to do and what we're planning on doing and what we allowed for in this budget, thanks to, to staff and Council's, you know, ability to give us that, that opportunity, is that we close our jail facility altogether, reduce our liability substantially in the process, and then transport all of our detainees directly to Moss Justice Center, that they can be housed there. There's just a lot of considerations with regard to that that have brought that about. And that's something that I think in light of what, of what we incur with the responsibilities and the liability that falls with, along with that, that in the long term, I, I think we're all better served. It's my personal opinion, but I think based on what we've incurred in the past, that it's better for all of us if we move in that direction. And of course, you know, that, that's been put into place with the things such as video bonding and our transport vehicle and the, the things that we have to have in order to make that happen.
So just to make sure I've got it clear, so we would book them here? I've not, you're the expert, book them here, hold them until we transport as soon as possible?
No, sir, they would be taken immediately from being taken into custody immediately to Moss Justice Center, to the Sheriff's Office Detention Center. They'd be booked there and they'd be kept there. The only reason that any detainee at that point in time and beyond that point, the only reason they would come into this building at all would be if we had to put them on a data master machine or they had to have a blood alcohol content taken here. And we have the ability to do that here because of the equipment that we have housed here. But that's the only reason at that point in time that anyone would need to actually enter into this building.
Yeah. Thank you for the background.
And it's a much longer transitional type issue. It's not one we could turn a switch and say, today we stop. So we're working to make sure that we can successfully continue to do the excellent level of service that we receive, and then we get to the ultimate goal of not housing. So just wanted you to have some background. It's, it's a little bit odd, but it works, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
On the terms for the old agreement charge, new agreement charge, I understand the deduction. The new agreements under current situation, if we move to the situation where we no longer have a jail, would it still be similar numbers?
It, again, it would be all dependent upon the charges themselves. I, I would anticipate there's going to be some fluctuations.
You can put yourself in their shoes. You know, they're not going to have the money that they've been having from the municipalities to run. So either taxes are going to go up or we're going to pay fees higher to sustain the services that will.
But we'd cut expenses on running the jail here, keeping that liability. As a lawyer sitting there, I'm sure it's always about liability. It's why you can't go on the football fields, why you can't use the parks, yes, all liability. I got you.
The, the rate, the 42.88 that's currently there, I know there's not an, an agreement we can find. Where does that, how old is that number right there as far as a per diem or a per prisoner, per day?
I can only say years, and, and it predates probably my time with the town.
And he's been here forever.
I was going to say, it's eons.
Unless there's all things considered, I mean, that, that's not that huge of a rate increase.
So there's a, is there a date? Obviously, you've been working on this for a while. Is there, is there a project date that we're shooting to?
Well, we, we shot to get money in the budget. We'll shoot to get the purchase of the vehicle and the officers hired, and we'll keep taking those steps moving forward.
Because of the jail, I know, was that capacity? Well, one time I knew, you know, yours had a lot of vacancy, then it was at capacity? And that's what, sure, if we're running up some hard deadline or not?
No.
Okay.
No, we just need to know what to do about.
Got you.
The charges that are coming or proposed from the county.
Now, if, if we do proceed with this, is this a, once you do it, there's no going back? Or if we do it for a couple of years and say, hey, this is just not working out well with the county, we can go back to?
Most of the policies that we did, that we develop or join in are flexible when we find it doesn't work. But you better have a good reason. We don't want to be flip-flopping back and forth. That's costly and confusing. So, you know, we definitely want to make decisions based on reason and then alter them as reason prevails.
And Mayor, I also believe this, this particular agreement, I believe it's for a two-year term and then a one-year rotating.
I think that's true.
I'm sure that's not pricing.
That's true.
I can, so the vehicle, just to clarify, want to clarify, so they would, so they would bring them here to transfer them to a different vehicle? So patrolmen would not have to take them immediately to York and take somebody out of, out of rotation? They'd bring them to the station, you said it's a, a different vehicle?
And a different officer.
And a different officer, okay.
It would give us the ability to transport. And, and for example, in the situation that we have now, if we have a female that's under arrest and a male arrestee as well, then by law, they can't be transported together. But be able to have a transport vehicle kind of helps us with the accessibility of being able to transport multiple people in a situation. That keeps us from tying up more than just one transport officer. It would keep us from tying up multiple officers in that type of situation, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate Davey and Chief for giving us as much information as, as we received. Now, we'll move to information discussion item number one, information pertaining, pertaining, boy.
Mayor?
It's not eight o'clock yet.
I'm sorry. Could we, can we, it's with it being a new business item, would they need to vote on, vote on that? Are you, are y'all good with me moving forward with that agreement? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Is the agreement in final form?
Uh, that, it is in final form.
Oh, if it's in final form, then we probably should.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, for new business item number two, I will look to my counsel for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept and have.
We can approve.
Sorry, approve.
Sorry.
Manager Broom to move forward with the intergovernment agreement with York County pertaining to housing of inmates.
Okay. Have a motion to accept and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. It was unanimous. Thank you. Now, thank you, Davey, for catching that.
Yes, ma'am.
Information discussion item number one, information pertaining to York County Sea Fund Project, Davey Broom.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And this one is a little different than in years past. Um, for informational purposes, York County Sea Fund Program, it's a, it's a program that's has been long, is a long-established partnership between the Saucy County Department of Transportation and the forty-six counties of the state. Uh, it funds improvements to state roads, county roads, city streets, and other local transportation projects. So, it gives, this is a funding opportunity for the town on an annual basis to get some of our roadways, uh, fixed. Now, in the town of Fort Mill, uh, we have hundreds of roads inside the town limits. Uh, the state owns about seventy-seven of them, and then the county does not own any inside the town limits, so we own the rest. Uh, many of those being, um, uh, neighborhood streets. So, the main thoroughfares through town, the older roads, uh, are typically owned by the state.
That's true.
In saying that, we, we submit a list to York County and representatives on York County Council take their awards and they, they are div, they're given a certain amount of money in their pot. And then they take the request that's presented to them and they have the county engineering department go out and rate these roadways, and then they determine which ones are going to be funded in that year, fiscal year, and the ones that aren't. Um, typically, um, the process is the county makes us aware that the, um, they're accepting Sea Fund requests. Uh, staff will put together a list, will present it to you, and then get your in, input on any you may, any streets you may want to include or add to our list. Um, this year was a little different. The county made, uh, made us aware or sent us a letter, a, a, a paper letter dated December sixth of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, it was received in the mail. Let me back up. They dated it December sixth, twenty-twenty-one, had the due date by December twentieth of twenty-twenty-one to turn in this, this list. We did not receive it in the mail until on or after the twentieth.
I'm so shocked with that Fort Mill post office.
And in saying that.
It's a government agency, can't say that.
Yeah. I reached out to, um, Dean Hendricks with York County Engineering, who heads up the, uh, Sea Fund Program. He was very amenable to allowing us to put together a list and to submit it. Um, we had to have it submitted by the end of the week last week, which we did. So, this is more of an informational purpose tonight rather than getting feedback from, uh, council. However, I would love for any feedback for any streets that you would like to see on the list. We'll make sure we get it on the list for next year. Um, but for informational purposes, the list that was submitted, uh, Chris, if we can, do we have that list? Uh, topping the list is Sprat Street.
Praise God.
Yes. And it is.
Mrs. Hosey lives right there. I'm sure she's not real happy about it.
That's why you don't hear me talk out loud about it. She is my mother.
It, it is, uh, the portion between Harris Street and, and White Street.
Yeah, praise God.
It's in, it's in dire needs. So, I also added, included that in my comments when I submitted this, uh, letter. Uh, Steel Street, uh, from the beginning point on Ralph Bunch, uh, all the way to South Carolina Highway four sixty, which is the Springfield Parkway.
Where is Ralph Bunch?
It is, if you turn off of one sixty on to Steel, uh, it's the third road on the right, I believe.
Yes, it's a secondary road, right?
Yes, secondary road, uh, just past the Duke Energy.
Okay, yeah. Just after?
Uh, I think it's actually right across the street or.
Okay. I was gonna say, because right in that curve, there's still some pretty bad places too. I just would hate for us to be a block off of what we need.
Like they did on White Street in Frat.
Possibly.
Yeah. So, that's what we did. We had the, uh, Public Works Department go out and give us the destination from the beginning to the end.
Sure, took him about fifteen minutes to find out all these.
So, they took that into consideration as well. So.
Okay.
Um, North White Street from Horse Road to McCammon Street, that runs along
Yep.
uh, in front of Walter Wildlife Park. And then Calhoun Street has been added to the list, uh, from Park Drive to Park Drive. So, if you know Calhoun Park, it makes a loop and connects into Calhoun. Uh, Meacham Street is a very short street as well, um, and it's same type of loop from Williamson Street.
Yeah.
Um, and then we've added McGee Street, which is, uh, it was begin at Steel and end at, at the end of Juniper Street. So, if you're heading out of town on Steel Street and get to McGee, it, it, it's on both sides of the roadway. This would be the portion to the left, uh, where Juniper Street connects to it. Um, and then, um, last but certainly not least, uh, Tom Hall Street from Main Street all the way to Bank Street. And so, again, this was the, the list that we submitted. I, I wasn't, I wasn't sure of council's, um, desire for what order to put these in. I, I felt pretty confident about the Sprat Street, so I made sure I listed it. But, uh, you may be, you may hear, or we may hear from, uh, county council on our recommendations for these.
I'm going to attempt to get a picture. I already have pictures of Sprat Street. Having sat on our fats for quite a number of years, I can tell you, they receive our lists, they go on our recommendation, and then they decide what percentage of the sea funds and who got them last and where it was and what's the high traffic. They don't see them. So, they don't know. We don't see them. So, I'm going to try really hard to get pictures and take them with me the end of this month to our fats, because that's where the decisions. And I'll send them to Christie on, and Joel, um, on what they look like. Because it's really hard to sit in a room with all the other people competing for the same funds. They know their areas, we know ours. But a visual is worth the effort. It truly is.
Davey, when, um, Joel Hamilton contacted you, I remember it was last year about this. So, this is just now coming to fruition off of that?
No, it happens regularly.
No, sir. This is, this is the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah.
Right.
He was working off of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
Right. And that was for Tom Hall Sidewalk, correct?
It was for the sidewalk along Tom Hall from Main Street for a hundred and fifty feet toward.
On the left side, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I just, it's all runs together sometimes. I just wanted to try to picture.
And I've not heard anything from that.
All right.
But, you know, there was some talk at that time about possibly Steel Street.
Yeah, I remember Steel Street.
We never did get any confirmation on it, so I went ahead and included it on this, this year's budget.
And with weather and other events, it can change.
All right, yeah.
It doesn't take much.
Right.
But, um, I'm in great hopes that I will be a real pest about Sprat Street because it's been patched and patched and patched and never done.
Five or six years.
It's been, never been done right.
Well, I've actually called them a couple of times myself and, and reported it. And I said, that's one of the main roads. And I said, the whole block, one hundred block needs to be done. That's a main interest way, just like Tom Hall. So, historically of this list, and I, I love the way they calculate the way the sea funds, one-third of the population, one-third of the gas tax, one-third. So, realistically, how much of this should we expect to get?
We'll be lucky to get one.
Okay.
Historically, we've been very fortunate in some years and, um, had the majority of our lists submitted. And then we, there's been years where we've had very little to maybe one.
Well, I think we. That's why I say one.
I mean, all you gotta do is get, uh, we can get the, uh, the ladies at the church truck calling and make their life miserable.
Well.
Our fats is the same, and I know, uh, Mayor Savage is on that. But, you know, because I asked the guy at one presentation, I said, so if we got the whole bundle of money, how much could we do? And it was like one mile of an interstate. I mean, it's not, I get it. It's not a lot of money, especially with the construction costs what they are. So, it's a, it's a difficult situation at best. But, but there are some redoozies on the Sprat Street is, is definitely one. I think some of the other main roads or something we would, because that's the first thing people see when they come to town. And they don't want to leave half their tire in that hole. Um, so anything we can do as a citizen, please let us know. Because, uh, like I said, I had contacted them before and I said, this is ridiculous.
Were you contacting DOT? Were you contacting the county council?
I contacted the county. I contacted the county. I got a, I made a call to the city hall, who gave me the right person to call over there to, uh.
The, the county council members are receptive. They're getting ready to redistrict. There'll be some changes. Um, so, we'll, we'll see where that goes.
Yeah, but.
And everybody, every municipality has it, okay?
Exactly.
Every one of them. The area we live in, because of the heat and then the moisture and then the freezing, and then the moisture, our roads don't hold up very well.
The freezing, we hadn't had any.
No, I wish.
Well, all I can say, if it wasn't for pennies, we would really be in a mess.
We'd be back in horse and buggies.
I mean, it's, it's, we would. It would, so, it's, uh, so thank you for, I think that list looks great. Uh, I could add, if you think we could get the whole list, I could think of three, four more. But I think those are, if we could get half of those would be a great step in the right direction.
And I also think it's a, it's a really good opportunity for anyone watching this recorded session. Um, for Sprat Street itself, it's a, it's as simple as a phone call to the Saucy County Department of Transportation. Uh, their, their Rock Hill Office, eight oh three, three two seven, six one eight six.
He's got it memorized.
I'm just saying, the more calls that are generated, uh, it certainly helps.
It's truly a safety issue because I, people are over in the other lane to get around those potholes. So, and somebody's not paying attention or looking at their phone or doing god knows what else they're not supposed to be doing.
I'm all get around.
I'm surprised there's not been some accidents there.
Right.
And it could have been. I was unaware of it. But, but it's, they're all the way in the other lane to get around that. So, it's truly a safety issue. I agree.
I know it is. Because mowing the grass over there is terrifying.
Mm-hmm.
It truly is.
So, Davey, when we, like, request last year, sometimes you just, you just don't hear back at all? I mean, because.
No, you always hear.
Hear, but it's, that, what, um, when Joel Hamilton called it, was they had, it was something different and they had some funds left over at the end of the year, which is rare.
Right.
And so, they were looking at how they, to best spend those funds.
Yeah.
So, we were just kind of pitching what we thought was our most needed, which at the time was, again, Harris Street.
Right.
I mean, uh, Sprat Street.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to look at, I think the last sea funds Michael Johnson helped to secure for us were over at Nation Ford for a sidewalk project. So, you gotta know that, you know, it's not unfair. It's just there isn't enough money to do the work that's needed. And, and I do appreciate the work of the county council members that try hard to get us those funds. We're just gonna have to try really hard to elevate the concerns and the safety on Sprat is true.
Yeah, so the cog, and I said at presentation the other night, and they're talking about all the infrastructure money that the state has. So, I think that's, if we can find out how to get some of that, because this truly is a, it's a maintenance issue, but there's such a backlog. We need to try to fix, fix these major roads so we can spend the, this regular sea fund money on doing it. And, and for one more time, what was that phone number?
Eight zero three.
Eight zero three.
Three two seven.
Three two seven.
Six one.
Six one.
Eight six.
Eight six.
And, and that's really the only means you have outside of going on to the Saucy County Department of Transportation website and entering a work order yourself. But it, it's set up for the entire state. So, you would have to, um, narrow it down to York County and then the jurisdiction, Fort Mill, and then the street. And it's, it's a little more cumbersome making a phone call or faxing them as a, as it gets directly to them.
Like that faxing. Mayor Savage, I'll, I'll offer any assistance I can with the, the, helping you with this or our fats. I understand that's, uh.
You're welcome to attend all our fats meetings.
Uh, I've listened in on a couple of them in the past, but, uh.
Stay awake for the whole thing?
The, uh, but this is definitely something, is we talked about an infrastructure, something we need to do, because roads are not going to fix themselves. And they're, and it, and they're, they're going to continue to deteriorate if, you know, if we can't keep them up.
It's a good education. It's, it's horrible to have to go through the detail, level of detail that is offered in those meetings. It is mind-boggling. But you do get a broader sense of what that small group of people are trying to do. And it is complicated. Everything's complicated. So, you're, it's always open to the public. I think they're still zooming. So, if you want to tap in via Zoom, um, can't promise you it'll stay at an hour, but it's interesting to get to know the players, get to know the requests. And remember what I tell you, Fort Mill doesn't do roads. The town of Fort Mill doesn't go out and create and pave roads.
But people think they do.
All the time.
Think that we do.
Will you real quick, the same process for Sprat? Is that for Steel as well? Is it stayed on two?
It has stayed on, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because that's a big road and that's going to be the harder one is because of the size.
Academy Street's a state road too, correct?
Uh, everyone on this list is a state on except Meacham.
Meacham.
Meacham Street's the only one that's.
Well, you know the situation we have on Academy Street where the pavements rolled?
That was in a previous Sea Fund Project.
Yeah.
If I, my memory serves me correctly.
We've contacted DOT too to find out what they can do about it.
Yes.
It's like that top ass, layer of asphalt just shifted.
Yep, yeah.
Okay. Um, that ends the list of topics that we had on our agenda this evening. Uh, we have no executive session item. Um, I'd like to welcome, Chris, anything for the good of the whole.
For, from my perspective, uh, so, looking forward to working, uh, there you continue working for the town of Fort Mill, uh, and looking forward to work with this group. You know, we've got, uh, two years of this council, and I think we need, uh, we all are here for the same reason, to do what we can to, to betterment of the town. Um, I would like to ask, it sounds like from what you said, we've already, you've got a planning session, uh, coming forward, which I think is coming from corporate America. That's always what we want to do, start off the first of the year so we can all get on the same, uh, make sure we all, priorities are the same. So, uh, uh, look forward to working with everyone. And, uh, it's coming off the Planning Commission. I understand how valuable the staff is. Um, so look forward to, uh, working with, with staff and, uh, this broom and, and some new people. So, uh, exciting.
Glad to have you. And I'm sure it'll be positive for the town, uh, to have your expertise on this council. Um, appreciate your service in a volunteer position on the Planning Commission. So.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Chris Moody? Uh, oh, just not correcting, but you might be with this council for a very long time. Two years is just aerially extracted.
I say with this council.
That we know of, two years.
Yes. Well, that's what I'm saying.
You'll be stuck with it longer than that.
You might be shocked.
Yeah. I'm just saying, elections come up in two years. So, if we, if us seven, which, uh, we're absent one tonight, can agree, here's our, and my goal was coming from corporate America and we're all working environment, or working environment, is focus on the things that, just like the roads. We can't fix all of them at one time. Let's fix the ones that we know are the, the worst first. Focus on that and what's next on the list. Uh, I think we can do that enough. And, and I'm, and I'm sure you, as mayor, have facilitated these and goes on. I just wasn't involved.
I have one vote, and I would like.
No, I'm talking about the planning, the whole process of the doing it. So, that's something we really need to do.
Yeah. The beauty of this council, and, and I need for this to be as a part of, of what we're videotaping. The beauty of the Fort Mill Council is that we work together. Um, we are a nonpartisan group and we work collectively for the good of the whole. Every person that sits up here, I believe, has a heart for Fort Mill. And I think we do a lot of things that are positive for our community that aren't necessarily seen here on a Monday night. Uh, we do a lot of work. We are awfully excited to have our new members. Um, but I think the town of Fort Mill is a destination place for many people because of the quality that we have here in Fort Mill. And that didn't happen by accident.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm pretty pleased and happy, um, to have all of you on a team. So, looking forward. Moody?
Ronnie informed me, I'm the only non-native sitting up here, so I guess my days are numbered. You were wrong, Ronnie. Sorry. Just kidding. No, I'm glad to be here. No, I'm glad to be here. Um, it's hard to believe it was twenty-twenty-two, was talking to somebody today, I was like, man. But anyway, I, I'm looking forward to getting, work with you guys and, uh, hoping the referees win the game tonight, because I don't know if I could really pull for either one of them, but, uh.
It's gonna be an interesting.
Probably Alabama, if I had to lean.
Ronnie?
Oh, welcome, Chris, and Alan, and Ben when he gets here. Uh, glad to have you aboard.
All righty, Alan?
I just wanna echo kinda what Chris was saying, that we're, we're here to be servants for the, for the community, and, uh, Davey, Chris, Chief, we're here, we're here for you guys, anything that we can do. Um, the, uh, I mentioned earlier was the, uh, the MLK Service Day. As soon as I saw that, we went out, went to Sam's and spent a bunch of money on a lot of those items that were on there, so we're definitely gonna be part of that, uh, uh, next Monday. So, uh, just happy to be here. I'm excited to, to work with everybody on the council here, including Ben, and, um, just ready, ready to get started, and roll tide.
Um, so a couple of things. Yesterday was National Law Enforcement Day. Hate that it was on a Sunday because we couldn't come in to, uh, talk about it until today, but, um, thank you all for what you do, um, every day, day in and day out. As Gwen said earlier, and we're very blessed to live in this area. We don't have to have a jail being built here to be able to handle what we have here, so thank you very much. I personally had dealings with the fire department over the holidays in an unfortunate accident of a not-so-smart person that I was around. So thank you to the fire department and all they did to help through that situation. Question, do we have plans for the second Saturday service startup, lots of S's, um, when we'll start doing that again?
The plan is to start in April, um, to be in same month as Earth Day, so.
Okay.
It's a mess out there.
It is.
That really helped.
It did, and it gave a lot of organizations that wanted to help and didn't know how to, an easy way to go sign up and try to do it. So, uh, you know, my ask would be if we can make it happen any quicker than Earth Day, our roads could use it.
Oh, they're awful.
But people can always go out and plant trash anytime they want, too.
I will say, we're looking to tweak it a little bit this year. Uh, we had, we had very little participation in the, um, July and August timeline.
Too hot.
It was too hot. No one came out, so we were looking at maybe doing it in the spring, early spring, and late fall, maybe extend it another month rather than end it in October. So, um, we feel like we'll get a better participation, more turnout, uh, make bigger impact on the roadways.
One of the things I have noticed being on our side of town is that it seems to be worse near the recycling center.
It is.
Um, are we monitoring, and I hate for a police officer to sit there all day and watch for it, but, um, can we just kind of make people aware of, you know, when you're in that area, let's make sure that you're covering up before you go dump.
Yeah, and I spoke with, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, you go ahead.
I spoke with, uh, the county manager about that, because that stretch of roadway is in the county.
Okay.
And, uh, they're, they're gonna be addressing that. I know he, he stated that they are, um, anyone that doesn't have their, um, debris tarped properly, they are fining when they're going to their convenience center, but it is, it's a, it's an eyesore in that immediate area.
It's horrible.
Yeah, and the fact that we can at least identify an area gives us an opportunity to really go in and look at it, so I'm glad staff's already looking at it. The other part, and kind of with new council coming on board, I would enjoy having an introduction of department head meeting for all of us. While we may have met some off and on through a planning meeting with COVID and a lot of the work from home and different things going on, I think it'd be beneficial for us to have something, whether it's informal, you know, everybody grab a little bite, or it's just a, you know, planning session where we hear kind of goals for the department heads. It'd be great to know and see faces. I mean, um, yeah, after No Shade November and Mask, I don't know that I would recognize a lot of people sometimes. So, yeah, I just think council, all of council could use it, not just the new ones, so I'd like to reflect something.
Thank you. I actually spoke to Davey and Mayor earlier. We did that, it's been several years ago. Last time I remember, we met at the, uh, at the Greenway. It's been years ago, but we had all the department heads and the council and.
The Planning Commission.
Planning Commission was there, and it was exactly, you know, what, what do the police need? What are, and just back, just a quick overview of the police department, you know, and then here's what our, here's what our pain points are, and we got it all, we got everybody there together, you know, as, uh, our old president used to say, get all the flyers around the table at the same time. So everybody got everything out, so everybody was aware of what we should focus, and then that gives us a little direction as a council. Here's kind of our priorities, because we all know what things we are aware of, but what we're not aware of is the things that might be going on that I'm, that I'm not. So that's, I'd asked the mayor earlier about that, and she said she was already working on it, as I knew she would be.
He is.
Well, I was deferring to the mayor, who knows how to delegate, but yeah, I think that was, that would be very good.
I think, I think having that opportunity to sit with them is awesome. I know I enjoyed the opportunity to have lunch with them at Christmas, and I know you weren't able to join. But I do think we don't, we need to plan, and, and we need to do this. Davey has met with each department, am I correct?
That is correct. Well, I'm down, I still have two.
And when he finishes, he will have a list of their goals, their objectives, um, and I do think, I'd like to see us go over that, and then, you know, we will talk about how to address it, because some of them are gonna be tied to budgetary items. Uh, they're also critical as we plan the strategic direction for the town and then the tactical direction. So I get it, and I don't disagree with you, but I don't want to overburden and ask them the same things fifty times. Take them off the job, have them come in on a Saturday or an afternoon or an evening more times than we have to. So, um, definitely want to get that done. It is critical path, but I think you are started on it and are moving in the right direction, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do you think we would have that in Q one?
I, I was, yes, in Q one, absolutely.
I'll answer for you, yes. Yes.
Great. Um, and then the other thing that I've noticed a lot more, it's kind of a resurgence, and I hate that, um, Mr. Savelli's not still here, is continuing to see a lot of restaurants and people in the community using QR codes for information scans. COVID's not going away. Um, I know we continue to still hand out flyers, but it might be a good opportunity for us to use some QR codes and things that we're doing around town. Yeah, I even got it on my health information for work, uh, scan it, and it takes you to the place where you do your form. So I just want to, again, touchless i- is here to stay, um, so make sure that we are doing the QR codes as much as we can.
If we can do it safely. There was news story in Charlotte, news story national, about hackers are beginning to go in restaurants and tamper with the QR code and get your information. It's when you start doing that, and everybody's paying for stuff with the phone, they then have that, so.
Yeah.
We'll look to our IT people and our law enforcement folks to say what's safe, and I agree with you, I think.
I think just PDFs more than, you know, submitting information, just PDFs of.
We actually used, uh, QR codes for, uh, the second Saturday service, speaking about that earlier, given the map of all the town streets.
Great idea, great use, yes, absolutely.
We'll use those every opportunity we can.
Perfect.
Good idea.
Thank you. And that's all for me. Welcome aboard, guys.
Yeah.
I want to take a minute, um, to at least acknowledge, um, that we, Randy Selph lost his wife. Um, one of our employees lost his wife this week. It's, it's a sad time, folks. The last two years have been different than any of the sixty-six years I've lived. They're, um, complicated, they're grief-filled years that I appreciate all of you because you help me laugh. Uh, you help me see positive things. You help me see energy and efforts for a future, because I think without you, it would be a pretty sad situation. Um, Virginia, you always make me feel better, always. And Chief, Davey, you guys have a level of patience that I appreciate. We're in this together, and I, I look forward to bonding as a team and doing the collaborative work, that everybody brings something good to the table. And I'm looking forward to twenty-twenty-two, um, in a, in a very positive way. So thank you for running. Thank you for serving. Thank you for listening. I am, um, I'm one lucky woman, and I know it, and I'm, I'm very, very grateful. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much, and your first meeting is under your belt.
It is done. Thank you.